All right. Hello, everybody online. I'm going to start this meeting. We're going to call to order the Town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for May 11th, 2022. I am Christy Anastasia. I'm the vice chair, but tonight I will be the chair. So please be patient with my process. This is the only second time I've banged the gavel. We have board members here, including David Ashmore online, wave your hand, and Meredith Randolph, wave your hand. And it looks like we have some members in the public. And then we also have Tracy Lockdiss Keller. We're all planning board members. We also have a new planning board member who could join us tonight. It's Gloria Conja, and so you might see her in the future. For folks who are on Zoom, I see two Zoom people other than board members. Thank you for being muted. That's helpful. If you need to be recognized, raise your virtual hand or unmute or something like that. And then if you can find the chat on the Zoom function, you can sign in and register as a participant of this meeting. Just chat everyone. We do keep a record of everyone who's here. And if we hear weird background noise, like if Meredith starts eating a big bag of popcorn or something, we will try to mute you to keep the noise down because this is a recording. I think that's it. So that's the call to order at the beginning of the meeting. My understanding is on the agenda, the next thing we have is approval of minutes.
Can we get visual from you guys? Is the owl not working?
I don't know anything about the owl. When we got here, it was unplugged. It might be crepuscular or something. Is there anything we need to do to it?
I took it off the...
I know. Isn't it cute? We're looking at the owl and trying to see if we can fix it. Kim is driving. It's not critical if you want to keep going.
If you can hear me, I think we have lost the auditory now as well.
Meredith, you're going to get cited for delay of game.
Really screwed things up, haven't I? Can't even hear them now. Oh, he made a sound. Do you hear us? No, but he hooted.
Can you hear us?
We can hear you now.
Okay, we got, we got two-way hearing.
I think we got it. Well, let's see if we do. Maybe, no.
Touch the video.
Okay, so you guys can hear us, but you can't see us, right? Okay. All right. Thank you, helpful member of the audience. Okay, where were we? Minutes? Okay, I think we have two sets of minutes to approve.
January 26.
Want to start with January 26?
Yep.
Earliest. Okay, we need to, we need a motion to approve the meetings of the Town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting, January 26, 2022. These were sent out to review this week.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve as presented the minutes from January 26, 2022.
You have a second?
Meredith Randolph, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Probably not. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Anastasia, aye. So that means those minutes are approved.
And then April 27.
Okay, next set of minutes we need to approve is Town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting, April 27, 2022. Do the motion for approval?
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 27, 2022.
Meredith Randolph, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, Dave?
Was he here?
Wait, was he here? Hold on a second.
No, no.
No, you gotta take that back. I don't think you were present. Rewind.
So do you put you three here?
Yeah.
On those? Okay, then you three at the bottom.
Yep, yep. Meredith?
Aye.
Okay, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Anastasia, aye. Thanks for catching that.
Sure.
Sorry. Okay, any other minutes? That's it? Okay, moving on to section three of the planning board agenda. We have a conditional use approval application 006-2022. Owner name, Stephen T. and Pamela R. Madera, from our trustees. Agent, Robert Falt. Location, 11 Rock End Road, Northeast Harbor. Tax map 024, lot 033. The zone is Village Residential 1. And under purpose, it's section 6B8, fences and walls exceeding CEO authority. There was a site inspection today at 4:45. Who was at the site inspection? Yay. You want to tell us a little bit about the site inspection?
Sure. We, Meredith and I were there and we met Mr. Falt at the driveway and walked down the driveway to observe a expanse of trees and a low grassy area, which is basically the property line between two residences and understand that the proposed fence would be erected right along an orange string which was shown in the wooded area to separate and give privacy to both sides, both parties. The area there is shaded and has trees and some light sort of decorative underbrush. And the fencing is a bit taller to accommodate the low dip in the land. No trees will be, or vegetation will be harmed with the erection of the fencing. And it should benefit the whole immediate small little neighborhood there.
That's the guide. Yeah.
Okay, Meredith, I'm assuming you didn't, did anybody else go to the site visit?
Oh, Gloria was there.
Gloria was there, but she's not here now. So I'm going to back up a little bit too. I need to remind myself, was this advertised?
Yes, I see that it was advertised in the Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, April 28.
Okay, and were abutters notified?
Yes, they were. They were notified by letter dated April 25th, and there were seven parties notified.
Okay. We can hear you, Dave. Okay, are there any conflicts of interest from any board members on this application? Okay, none heard. We already did the site visit. Like to open to the public for comment on this application? Anyone in the real world have a comment?
You can also ask the agent if he has any additional information he might want to add to what Tracy...
Okay, let's not open it to the public. Agent, do you have more information you'd like to add to the site visit?
I thought Tracy was very thorough in her description.
Well done. Okay, now open it to the public. Does anyone have anything they want to add to the context of that application? Anybody online? Hearing none? Tell them this, we usually turn it over to the applicant for presentation. We've already done that, right?
You can already do that, but you can give a brief if you would like to know what's being proposed.
Okay. Is the applicant online? Okay, so we already did that. Sorry, you didn't want to add anything else? Okay. So now we move to the checklist.
We have the patient's plea.
All right, so we need to find the application complete.
Make a motion to find the application complete.
Okay, thank you, Meredith. Do you have a second?
Tracy Keller, I'll second that the application is complete.
Okay, all those in favor, Dave?
Aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Anastasia, aye. So we have found the application complete. Now we make a decision about which form we're going to use? Short form or long form?
I make a motion to use the short form.
Okay, anyone want to second the use of the short form?
Randolph, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, Dave?
Aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Anastasia, aye. So ding ding ding, short form. Will you be the secretary for the short form?
Yes, I will.
And everyone have the packet? Did you get it in the mail? Have it in front of you? Okay, that's good. See it? Okay. Let's see. Now I have to make a motion to approve the application, correct?
Yep, and I'll come back afterwards.
Press pause, right?
So I will make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, second?
Randolph, second.
Okay, all those in favor, Dave?
Hold on, we gotta go through the application.
Oh, we pause, we pause, we pause, we pause. Press pause, okay. So now we just start with the application, right? The checklist.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking at the checklist and Tracy, as a secretary, is going to take notes on this. And we are looking at section six, standards for uses, permits, and approvals for review by the planning board. We start with section 6A, general performance standards. We'll start with compatibility. If you look on page three of the application, there's a note about compatibility. And it says that it's going to be eight foot high by 106 feet long. And that the visual impact, the proposed fence, will be between two residential properties. Proximity to other structures, the proposed fence will be located on the shared boundary line. Please refer to survey plan and aerial photo for proposed fence location relative to other structures. And under density of development, please refer to the survey plan and aerial photo for current development on the properties. Do we want to, we can say, see application?
Yes.
And then we're moving to 6A2, erosion and sedimentation control. And the application states that minimum soil will be disturbed to install the posts. It also says, in terms of removal of sand or gravel, NA. And under tilling of soil, it also says NA. So for 6A2, see application? Moving on to 6A3, highway safety, NA. NA?
Yep.
That's a trick one, because you can see application to see that it's NA, or you can just say it's NA. Impact on town services, 6A.4, NA. The proposed fence installation does not create a burden for essential public services to provide access for fire and police protection or refuse collection. See application. That's the trick one. Okay, we'll put NA, but there's more detail. Okay, Kim says NA for 6A4. Okay. There needs to be lines there, so you can like track.
No, I'm going to do this.
Okay, 6A5, land suitability. Please refer to the attached Hancock County Soil Survey specifications. See application. 6A6, lighting outdoor. And it goes over things about excessive lighting and trespass, et cetera. The application says NA. No lighting on the fence? Other than natural light? 6A7, stormwater, NA. You can check NA, but it does say because there is minimal soil disturbance with post-insulation, fence panels will be above grade to allow the existing stormwater runoff to follow its natural course. See, I kind of feel like that one should be see, see application. That's important information. Kim doesn't agree with me, maybe she shrugged her shoulder. NA. Okay.
I think they're at least as busy stating that even the fence panels will be above grade.
Yeah.
So it's just going to continue.
NA applies, for sure. I like the description because it shows the sensitivity to the land, but I'm good with NA. Okay, moving on to 6A8, vegetation, NA. No vegetation is going to be. 6A9, dust, fumes, vapors, odors, and gases, NA.
All right.
Okay, and then, this is where it gets tricky. We get, now we have to do our findings of fact for that section. So is that a motion? Somebody? What is it?
You guys just do the findings back and then you vote on it.
Okay, does somebody want to take a stab at the findings of fact? For 6A, general performance standards?
How about the, the findings are that the standards of 6A have been met? And the conclusion, no, the findings are see application. And the conclusion of law is that the standards of 6A have been met.
Yes. So findings of fact are see application, and the conclusion of law is the standard has been met. And can we just do the motion to approve the whole thing at the end?
No, it's different, six, it's three different sections.
So a motion to approve that section? So I'm looking for a motion to approve that section?
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve section 6A.
Okay, can I, okay, can I have a second?
Dave Ashmore, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith? You, Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Thank you.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Anastasia, aye. So that, that one's good. I think you're supposed to put down who made the motion and who did the second, right? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so Tracy, you move it, and Ashmore second it.
All right. Moving right along, what's our next section?
6B? 6B, yep.
Okay, let me see. Okay. All right, agriculture, NA. Air landing sites? Anyone? On your fence? Excavation? Fences and wall, application?
See, okay.
Standard not met unless approval is granted by the planning board, which is why this is here. The proposed fence requires conditional use approval due to the proposed height of eight feet and the six-foot setback requirement from the edge of forest lane, road, and/or edge of right-of-way.
So we propose them to bypass the extra six feet. Which you guys have authority to review.
Right, so at this point, do we have a discussion about that? Or, or does it come up when we make a motion to approve?
We can talk about it right now if you want to.
Okay. Does everyone understand what's being asked for in 6B8? In the sense that the height exceeds the CEO's authority and the six-foot setback requirement? Does that make sense to you, Tracy, from the site visit?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Tracy if you didn't attend the site visit based on what's being asked for?
I think it might be important to note that Forest Lane doesn't go through. So the fence, although it's close to the road, is simply at the dead end.
Okay. Can we move on? Okay, so 6B?
So is it applicable standard or is it?
Oh, right, because we're jumping. Okay, so can we get a findings of fact for 6B8?
Well, you just decide, is it NA, applicable standard or not?
Well, the standard is not that.
Most planning was approved.
Great.
Right, you're going to say see note below.
Okay.
Okay, you're going to have to know the reason why.
See note below.
Yeah. And what's the note going to say?
It's going to say?
It's going to say section 6B, fences. I'd just say fences as proposed has been reviewed. And meets the requirements for conditional use approval by the planning board.
Should it be more specific and say for proposed height?
Say in compliance with the description under section 6B8.
I like it.
What about meeting with description of 6B8?
As stated on the application.
Yeah, as stated on the application under section 6B8.
Okay, want to read that back?
Yep, I will try.
So it's for 6B8, see notes below, and the note below says?
As described, so I wrote.
Can I just add something? Because we could be just putting this at the end of 6B that the only, we could include in there 6B, only section applicable is this section. So we don't need to discuss the rest of 6B. And then say what you're saying. So it's your finding in fact, conclusion, conclusion of law.
Yeah, I think she's just writing down the note right now, but you are probably right.
Okay. The fence as proposed has been reviewed and meets the requirements for conditionally, conditionally use approval by the planning board. As stated on the application, there's section 6B, the only section applicable, eight, the only section applicable.
Yeah, so that'll be true. We have, Meredith, we haven't finished going through it, but they're probably all NA, as you're saying. They will be. Okay, so let's move on to 6B18, wireless communication.
Wait, 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 we have to do.
Yeah, okay. 6B16, sign regulations, NA. Okay, and then that's wireless communication, right? 6B18, wireless communication, which I'm going to guess in anticipation of turning the page that it's NA, NA. Animal husbandry is 6B19 is also NA. 6B20, mobile food vendors, NA. Not a little hole cut in the fence to sell.
Roommate house.
NA.
Hotels and motels.
NA. Okay, so as Meredith very precisely stated, the only one that applies is the 6B8. Does somebody want to pull together findings of fact, conclusions of law? It will have to do with the fact that the findings of fact are that section 6B8 applies as stated on the application, and it's the only one that applies. Therefore, the conclusion of law is the standard has been met, something to that effect.
So moved. I feel helped me rewrite it.
Do we have a second?
Let, do we?
I only got just, just read this here. Proposals will include none of these specified activities or land use prescriptions as described in 6B, except for sections noted above 6B8.
Yep. Okay, we're going to reread it again, start from here.
Okay.
The findings of fact are that that proposed.
The findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific, specific activities or land uses described in section B, 6B, except for the applicable section noted above, 6B fences and walls. The. Point eight, okay. Point eight, okay. The conclusion of law is that section 6B is not applicable except for section 6B8. Can you hang on a minute? This will stop because it's a little battery.
We're rolling, Kim.
And Amy's got to dictate this, so.
Okay, we're pausing momentarily to replace the battery in the recorder. Can you get it open? The owl is burping. Scotch chapier. The owl is burg, uh, scotch chapier. Do we have batteries? Yeah, okay, I'm not gonna take them out until we know where they are, so. You replace both of them?
Yep. Back, back, back on, oh, struggle back up again.
Yeah, but you may wanna tape it again, it's gonna lose. No, no, I there was tape there.
This will be a fun one for Heidi.
This is when, like, the paving construction hits a power line and we lose Tracy.
We're recording it through Zoom though, too, so we have another recording.
We did not like the way it went in, or? Oh, so it's. Oh, man. Well, you know, we can do is, uh, you can use your voice memo on your cell phone if you want and we can send that Heidi and then they'll have the Zoom as a backup. It doesn't look like it necessarily wants to work. Oh, you got it, yeah, Kim, that's why she's the CEO.
Yeah, we might have it working.
Okay, stop me to read that again.
Go ahead, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
The, um, the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section sixty, except for the applicable section sixty eight fences and walls. The conclusion of law is that section six B is not applicable except for section sixty eight fences and walls. And then I wrote, I started to write, the findings of fact are that section sixty eight as stated on the application.
I think just this up here will.
That, yeah.
Yeah, that's funny, that'll you.
Okay.
Okay, um.
So Tracy move.
Tracy moved, nobody second because they wanted to rehear it. Does somebody want to second it now?
Now I'll second it.
Okay, and all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Casey?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself Anastasia, aye. Okay, so we've got one more chunk, right, one more section.
Six B.
None of it, right, it's not in the shoreline.
No.
Okay, and then.
Finally back to.
Five point nine.
We have to do the findings of fact for that.
That's no, yeah, well, you're, do your, um, on your checklist here, this is what you're gonna read. The finding of fact is the proposed lot is entirely outside the shoreline.
Okay.
Therefore, section sixty is not applicable.
Okay. Alright.
And we're gonna vote on that. Oh, oh, somebody's gonna move it.
Thank you, all those in favor, Dave?
Who moved? I'm the one that read it.
Oh, uh, you seconded it, Meredith?
Yeah, I, I just want to be in second, somebody else go first.
You seconded it, Meredith?
Yes.
Now vote, so all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
I'm pointing at you, but you can't see that. Okay, Tracy?
Keller, aye.
Myself Anastasia, aye. So we're done with that section?
Yep, and now I go to five point nine.
Same thing, you just vote. Section five point nine is not applicable because the, um.
Can you read that?
Entirely outside the shoreline zone.
I make that motion.
The proposed law, oh, is entirely, oh.
That's what we just did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same thing with five point nine.
Yeah, I think she's just looking for what to say, so the.
Just say the same thing.
So.
Section five point nine is not applicable because the proposed water is entirely outside the shoreline zone and therefore five point nine is not applicable.
Okay, you want to some move?
Some move.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, Dave?
Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Uh, Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself Anastasia, aye. Did we get through all the sections on that one?
Yep.
Okay.
And then here we have, uh, we have two new conditions.
Oh, right, any permit conditions, um. Any permit conditions from anybody on the planning board related to this application?
No.
Okay, so then I think we, um, unpress pause on finding the application complete. And. What's that?
You voted to approve, right, but then you pressed the pause button.
And now I just have to say all those in favor. Okay, all those in favor of this application, uh. Yeah, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Uh, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
And myself Anastasia, aye. Uh, so I think we have that application as approved.
Yeah, so now you just sign.
Okay.
You do a nine days and put Meredith's gonna come in and.
Today's May eleven.
Yeah. You can check approved.
So now you pull a building permit with me and I put the fence up. And it's a dollar per foot.
Thanks. Thank you for attending the Mount Desert Planning Board, it was a pleasure. Okay, moving on. Expositiously, we move on to.
Well, uh, wait, I have a piece of paper, hold on, I have page four. What is this? There's something that needs to be.
It looks like it's from minutes or something like that, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Very important. Um, next thing on the agenda, moving through this, is, uh, it's a not, uh, change of use of a non-conforming structure section four point three point seven. And what that says, and you can follow along on your agenda, the use of a non-conforming structure. So we're looking at a non-conforming structure, may not be changed to another use unless the planning board, after receiving a written application, determines that the new use will have no greater adverse impact than the existing one. Okay, the owner's name is Maria M. Thompson, who I assume is in real life attendance.
Yeah.
Can't see her, but she's here, can't see us either. Location is twenty one Joy Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map zero two five, lot one four eight. The zone is Village Residential One, so the same zone as the last one. Purpose is to convert the second story of an existing garage from storage space into a residential dwelling unit. Um, and there was a site inspection at five. Before we talked about the site inspection, was this advertised?
Yes, it was, uh, advertised on Thursday, April twenty eighth in the Mount Desert Islander. And butters were, uh, notified by a letter of April twenty fifth and there were eight, a butter, a butter parties notified.
Alright, any conflicts of interest on this, uh, application from the board? Hearing none, uh, we can move, well, is there, you're the, um.
This one.
Owner and agent, okay, do you want to speak to the site before or after the site visit person describes what's going on?
Always.
Okay, um, who was at that site visit?
Wanna do this?
Okay, were you there too, Tracy?
Yeah.
Okay, so Tracy and Meredith were there, and Meredith, can you report on your site visit?
Um, we observed the building, uh, that Newos to push the apartment in. Uh, she explained her situation, that her son Parker, Parker wants to move back here and had a very difficult time finding housing. Um, she has a right of way that comes in from one direction and then she's got a driveway on the other side. Um, and the garage has been used for storage and it sits too close to the property line. Wants to change it to an apartment. Um, might add a deck to one side, but otherwise not changing the structure. Um. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I was, the, the property line to which it's rather close, which is causing issue is not exactly parallel to the structure, it's sort of, um, veering away, as sort of a skewer of. It's at an angle, I can't think of what the correct.
Garage is not parallel to the park.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, and then you wanted to follow up by adding some information to the site?
Uh, no, it's about it, it's, I think it's, um, it's six feet and four feet in front of the property line approximately. And my director butter, Charlie, Charlie Merriman is, um, has written a letter to you all.
Yeah.
An email to Kim, saying that he has no issue with this situation and he's, he's the one who would most be most directly affected by, um, this change.
Okay, so we have, um, a form to use as we go through the analysis of this application. And it follows section four point three point seven. Uh, some of you may remember doing something similar to this in Seal Harbor. If you remember, we had a non-conforming structure and there was like a little bit of an edge that slipped over the setback. And one of the options was like to shave that corner off, so it wasn't on the setback or move the building. Anyone remember what happened?
Those were my clients, so I think I do remember. I think, I think you're talking about the ones where all the neighbors.
I am, yep, yeah, I was just trying to get people's heads in that space the last time we looked at this.
Do not expect anybody to object at all, even though we weren't changing the, the, uh, building. But because it was a change of use and the clients had prior grudges, they threw fit and said the clients couldn't, um, make the change unless they moved the building.
True statement, uh, we do not seem to have that issue with this one. Um, if you, so that's good, okay, um, let me just get my bearings where I want to go next here. Um, let me start working on the checklist and go through, oh, do you have the checklist? Nope, I'll give you my checklist. A little pencil mark there, okay, so we're gonna start by, uh, doing findings and facts and conclusions of laws of the different sections that are used to analyze this. So for example, it starts with the subject or adjacent properties and resources. And actually, let me reread this again just for context. The use of a non-conforming structure may not be changed to another use unless the planning board, after receiving a written application, determines that the new use will have no greater adverse impact than the existing use on. And so A on the checklist is the subject or adjacent properties and resources. Uh, so, uh, somebody want to take a stab at findings of fact and conclusions of law in terms of the adjacent properties and resources? So probably something like, uh, the findings are fact are that, uh, the butters were notified. And, uh, one, a butter closest to butter, how would you describe the person who said it was okay? Closest to butter, adjacent, a butter, um, provided a letter?
Yep, an email.
An email.
No objections.
With no objections. Um, therefore, the conclusion of law is that, as standard, is they not, that right, Kim?
Um, yeah, I would, yeah, I would, yeah.
Okay. Did you get all that? Okay, um, I'm not, I was trying to put it out there for somebody else too, maybe.
So moved, but.
Okay, so the findings of fact, or A where you are, is that the, um, uh.
A butter.
Findings of fact are that the, all the butters were notified and the adjoining a butter provided, uh, consent in an email dated.
Um, April nineteenth.
Yeah. Um, therefore, the, uh, conclusion, therefore, the conclusion of laws is standard has been met.
Do we need to be going through the pinpoint items before you get all the way to?
We do one for each.
Our A and B, the event.
Yeah, so the checklist is broken up into every tiny little section of.
A lot of it's not gonna be applicable anyway, so you've got to go through each section because last time you did this, it was remanded back because you didn't do it, so now you're gonna go through each section.
Water body tributaries.
Wait, hold on one second, does that answer your question, Meredith?
Yeah, I, I guess it sounded to me like this was the overall conclusion of the application and, but we still need to review the individual sections before we vote on that.
Going through each one.
Yes.
Voting on one.
Yes.
And each section, each little section has a findings of fact, conclusions of law.
This only has to do.
Is there a short form we need to vote for?
I think this is the short form, because last time we used the super short form and we got a remand. Is that, we should characterize it that way.
No, I think, well, the reason why I was romantic is you only did the first two, you might do the other sections.
Yeah, okay, moving on, um, so, uh, we have to determine that the new use will have no greater adverse impact than the existing use on the water body tributary stream or wetland.
And you can say something to the effect that the provided zoning map and or aerial photos and or floodplain map show that this property is no, no, not within the shoreline zone. There's no streams, no wetlands.
So provided.
And no water body that would be affected by this change of use.
So did we stop at D last time? I didn't facilitate that.
Okay, the provided maps, et cetera, provided, show that there is no water body that would be affected by this change of use. Still that, okay, conclusion of law?
Is the standard is the met.
Okay, I'll just write the same thing.
Okay, so moving on to the other sections.
Vote on that. Say.
Yes, okay, so read the findings of fact and conclusion of law.
The provided maps, et cetera, provided, show that there is no water body that would be affected by this change of use. Uh, therefore, the conclusion of law is that the standard has been met.
Okay, can we get a second on that?
Uh, Randolph, I'll second.
Thank you, uh, all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Anastasia, myself Anastasia, aye.
Did you vote on the first one?
Uh, we might have forgotten to do that.
I don't think you did on the first one.
Yeah. I blew it.
I have no boldness, second on the first.
Yeah, 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 so just read the, we're gonna rewind a little bit and go back to A.
Okay, A, it says, all butters were notified and adjoining a butter provided a consent in a in, in an email dated April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Therefore, the conclusion of law is that the standard has been met.
Okay, do we have a second?
Randolph, I'll second.
Thank you.
Tracy? Yeah, she read it, so she moved and then Meredith seconded. All those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, Anastasia, I. Then we can skip B and go down to the other one.
All right, and this says, in determining that no greater adverse impact will occur, the planning board should require written documentation from the applicant regarding the probable effects upon public health and safety.
Mm-hmm. Uh read the whole thing and then I'll go back to, oh, you don't have the whole thing, so the whole thing says public health and safety. And we have to go through each one of these, um erosion and sedimentation, water quality, fish and wildlife habitat, vegetative cover. These are all sections on there, right? Yeah, yeah, um visual and actual points of public access to waters, natural beauty, floodplain management, archaeological and historical resources, and commercial fishing and maritime activities, and other functionally water dependent uses, okay, so now we're going to go back up to the uh public health and safety, okay?
Read her application, what you wrote.
Um I can read it, it says no greater adverse impact will, this is under public health and safety. No greater adverse impact will occur, the existing structure is currently connected to town sewer and public water.
Thought you're finding a fact.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does she have to write that all out, or can she say C application, public?
I'd say refer to the application.
Okay.
Submit an application. Conclusion of law?
Standard has been met.
You don't have to blow all that, you know, do that's very on.
Have to go through all these, okay.
Now erosion and sedimentation.
Okay, uh application says not applicable, the proposed change or use of the existing structure will not create erosion or sedimentation. So.
Refer to submitted application.
Uh moving on to water quality. Also, no.
Conclusion of law.
No.
Okay, this is standard, standard has been met. Water quality.
No greater adverse impact will occur, public water currently exists within the structure.
Refer to submitted application. Standard has been met.
Then you can read the next category.
Fish and wildlife habitat.
Not applicable, the lot in question is an inland lot with no streams or wetlands on the property. So she addressed fish on that because there's no streams or wetland, and what would you say about wildlife?
There's no fish on her property.
It's not a habitat area, it doesn't have.
Not a designated habitat area, that's good, yeah, no, I get the fish part, I mean, if there's no water, there's no fish, but there could still be wildlife.
Yeah, okay.
So it's not a designated habitat, so, yeah, so I would say C application.
Okay.
Standard is in that.
Okay, the next one is vegetative cover.
Okay, it's also not applicable, and the rationale is the proposed change of use of the existing structure will not create added vegetative cover. So there's no adverse impact from additional vegetation, is that what I need?
Or she's not going to take any vegetation away?
Yeah, yeah, she's not removing any, I suppose, I'm not removing any.
It should say will not remove vegetative cover, right, not create added.
That's not applicable.
Okay, so just not applicable, that's fine, it's the application, okay.
Okay, so right now, it's applicable to the application.
Yep, 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 yep. It started, leads with not applicable, so that that's helpful, okay. And then.
The conclusion of laws? Standard has been met.
Yeah, because they're not taking anything down.
Okay, and then it says uh visual and actual points of public access to waters.
Okay, that's also listed as not applicable, you can write C application. Uh the only public access to waters is down at the Northeast Harbor Marina, see attached aerial photos to give a perspective of visual and actual points of public access to waters. Also included within the aerial photos is the coastal wetland ocean located at the end of Joy Road, so it's just not applicable. C application.
The conclusion of law is that the standard has been met?
Yep.
Okay, the next one is natural beauty.
Uh not applicable. Natural beauty typically is an area requiring protection to conserve and enhance its natural beauty because of its landscape or because it has important historical or cultural connections, so NAC application. And I can tell you two are following along in the application, thank you.
Standard has been met.
Standard has been met.
Okay, floodplain management.
Not applicable, the property is not in a floodplain area, there is a zoning map attached, standard has been met.
Uh archaeological and historic resources.
Not applicable, property is not located within an archaeological or historic site as per the attached map, all the little squares showing where those important areas are. Standard has been met.
Property is not located within a archaeological important area.
Archaeological or historic site. I think you just say NAC application.
Okay.
Standard is. You didn't know you were going to be doing this much writing, thanks.
Oh, I did also.
Okay. Next category.
Commercial fishing and maritime activities.
Not applicable, uh so C application, NAC application, uh property is not located within the shoreline, commercial zoning district.
Property.
And we have one more bullet. Hang tight.
Shoreland.
Shoreland, commercial zoning district, a C ZD.
Okay, um other functionally water dependent uses.
NAC application, and you don't have to write this, just say C application, uh property is not located within the shoreline zone, shoreline residential zone, or shoreline commercial zone. Standard has been met.
Cool conditions.
So now do we do a sort of a summative, um something to the effect of that the uh
from the application.
Move on the application.
Um now you approve the change of use as presented.
Okay. I make a motion, somebody needs to make a motion to approve the change of use as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Uh myself, Anastasia, I. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You survived this planning board meeting. Oh, but you also got an approved application.
I got an approved application on the first try, so I'm good. Thank you, Kim, for your assistance.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for your time and uh and your effort to improve our town. Thank you, is there anything more needed from me? Nope, they just need to sign this, and then once we get all the signatures, we'll send it to you with a copy in a minute.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And this means that, oh, good, you're you're good, I'm talking to my fellow board members, thank you for showing up at the Mount Desert Planning Board meeting, we love company. Don't leave anything behind. Um so Meredith, you need to come in and sign those, what do you do, Dave, we sign them?
I'm going to give you, I am, I'm going to do.
Dave, are you not here?
Yeah, I have all this written.
Okay.
What are you saying, Meredith? Was Dave in another state or is he here?
I don't know, where are you?
I'm in Hall Quarry.
Oh, you're close.
Welcome home.
All right, come on down and sign the application. Kim went to go get like printed out for a clean thing and we're going to re-sign it.
Scribbles.
And then we have other, other, do we have any other, I'll wait for Kim to come back, but. That's cool, when did you get back to Hall Quarry?
Uh a week or so ago.
Good, are you happy to be back?
Yep, yeah, definitely.
It's hard to leave, whenever I leave the island, I always feel sad, and then I always feel better when I like cross the bridge, you know, I go across T I, hold my breath, and then I get on N D I. Well done, thank you, Tracy.
Fine.
The bench is not deep, you know, as soon as you make the second, you got a I, you know, with four of us, it's like the lightning.
So I've just uh got really scribbly handwriting, but I can tell I wrote one, write it.
Yeah. That is fine, I think probably for Kim too, like he does that pen is so gooey, it goes through, yeah.
And we got our packets for the next meeting, so.
I don't know if they'll let you, we can ask Kim if you need to pick them up or if they're going to mail them. All right, thank you.
Sure, I just didn't think it looked good having all that writing on there and then.
You need to come in and sign, so we might as well pick up our own packets rather than mail them.
I think they're going to pick up their package rather than.
Yeah, Jen was going to ask you to come in and pick them up because she says postage is a lot with these.
Yep, and Dave's in Hall Quarry, so.
Welcome back to me, honey.
I know, that's what we were just saying, we asked him if he was happy to be back, he said, he said, heck yeah.
Yay, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to section five, other, do you have any other?
Other.
Do you have any other business?
No.
I have other business, we need a functional recorder that is not janky.
Yeah, no, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
I just wanted that recorded in the meeting minutes as other business.
Do noted.
For the important work that we do, um so nobody has anything before I start sneaking toward looking for a motion to adjourn?
Um. Let's see.
Gloria will be there next meeting.
Yeah. Um yeah, no, I think we're good.
Did you start the recording? No, it's still going, okay, all right, we can't talk smack, okay, and no other business.
Gloria is, oh, she can be, she has one more class, right?
Yeah, she's got.
Yeah, but she got, it sounds like she got sworn in.
Yeah, she said she did.
Been sworn in.
So she.
She just, she was telling us that she had two more classes and that was what was her was conflicting, and that she couldn't make meeting tonight, now we're thinking she can't make the next meeting, but she can because the next class she has is next week, so.
Yeah, yeah, because I feel like she left early during the interview for class, so that might have been the first one.
She had a class going.
Okay, well, that'd be great to have another person and another viewpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything else under other? We haven't heard anything about um anything coming out of the meeting we had with the quarry. No, okay, nothing, okay.
It was in the paper.
Huh?
It was right up in the paper that they they've gone to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
No, we haven't, not yet.
Yeah, well, yeah, but they. To adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Tracy Keller, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, Anastasia, I. Uh if there is no objection to the meeting, we will now adjourn, hearing no objection. I'm holding the hammer, this meeting is adjourned. All right, thank you.
Good night.
Bye.